The opportunity for you to deny this application without prejudice. That frankly is only an option available to the zoning board of appeals. That is not an option in either the zoning regulations or in state statute, section eight dash eight, which governs your actions on site plan review applications. And it says that a planning and zoning commission can either approve, deny, or modify a site plan application. Section one eighteen fourteen fifty-one B four of your regulations state the site plan applications, which comply with the regulations shall be approved or modified and approved. Ms. Laura Chella talked about a variety of issues ranging from enforcement noise where schools factored into traffic. So I, and she was concerned about future violations. Frankly, it's improper for you as a commission to act based upon concern or trepidation for a future possible violation. Noise and the city's noise ordinance would apply and control. Schools were taken into consideration, hence the traffic counts during the school year when school was in session. The health department fully reviewed the application and issued a sign off. There's not a lot of interest other than in the site, other than a data center. Several years ago, there was a concept for a multi-generational housing development. And as I said before, possibly from Norwalk High School. There was question about the DEP consent order from two thousand and eighteen. That order related to permit application filings for boilers, pumps and generators. The three boilers are slated for demolition, so that is a moot issue, certainly an outside your jurisdiction. The fire pumps and generators continue to be used. Emergency generator onsite is owned by the third taxing district, which performed maintenance about two weeks ago. And we are not aware of any further enforcement action requiring DEP to become involved. And any payments required under the consent order were paid by the owner when they would do. Couple more issues and then I will be done. As I said before, the site has one thousand two hundred and forty plus or minus parking spaces. Approximately two hundred and seventy spaces would be used for material storage, which about with about another hundred and fifty for employees. So that five hundred spaces will leave just over seven hundred spaces there about available as a resource for the vacant space in the building when it becomes rentable. Lastly, a fueling station. As was explained, this is not, there's not going to be a fueling station for empty, the MTA fleet or their employees. Gas stored onsite would be for small pieces of equipment or the generators and that gasoline would be stored in two gallon containers in secured and ventilated storage lockers. As I said at the outset of my presentation when we first began, please keep in mind when you consider the testimony of my client's consultants Craig Yanis, Eric Lindquist, Laura King and Anna Maria Vanilla, as well as the public, keep in mind the following. Norwalk Center is a thirty-three acre parcel with a six hundred and sixty thousand square foot building and over twelve hundred parking spaces. It has been owned, it has been occupied by Norton Northrop Grumman for years and now owned by Norwalk Center. At the height of Norton, Norwalk, excuse me, at the height of Northrop Grumman, three shifts ran and at the height of shift, more than thirty-two hundred employees were pleasant, were present. The building is generally vacant. The application seeks to install a tenant in a hundred and thirteen thousand square feet of interior space for office, storage and manufacturing uses and part of the eastern parking lot for storage of MTA materials and employees parking. Further, as you consider and deliberate deliberate rate, the only standards of review that are applicable are the ones I mentioned before. Traffic, utilities, lighting, landscaping, existence of zoning violations, parking, impact on adjacent properties and environmental, the ones that were articulated. These are the only standards that are applicable and require your examination. Furthermore, Connecticut case law is very clear on your role when acting on a site plan review application. You acted in an administrative capacity. So the question before you is, does the application conform to the zoning regulations or not? As a commission, you therefore have no independent discretion beyond determining whether the, whether or not the plan complies with the regulations applicable at the time of submission and you're obligated to apply the requirements of those regulations as written. The courts have also established that once a zoning commission establishes that a use is a permitted use such as here, that there's a conclusive presumption that such a use in general does not adversely attract affect traffic within the zone. So, so issues related to the requirement of EV charging stations. That shouldn't come into the, into play because number one state statute four B dash seventy-seven only requires them to be added with new construction and your old regulations did not require them. Similarly, there's no regulatory authority to limit the number of vehicles on the site or report on their increases. Based upon the documents submitted and the testimony by Mr. Yanis, Ms. King, Mr. Lindquist and Mr. Bonella and Ms. Bonella, this application should be approved as it complies with the regulations and standards in existence at the time of submission. We thank you again for your time and your attention. This concludes my rebuttal. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Attorney Satchi Chapin?
Yeah, Mr. Schulman, um, thank you. So I'm not sure if this is a question for Attorney Satchi or Mr. Kleppen, but one of the things that came up in public comments and I apologize if you did cover this, Attorney Satchi, I appreciate your detailed review of, of the public comment. One of the things that came up in the public comment though was a question about if the material storage onsite exceeded twenty thousand square feet, that this needs to be a special permit instead of a site plan review. Is the person who submitted that understanding that correctly? I'm, I understand that correctly from rereading the regulations.
I have to pull that up, but I believe that's under the new regulations. I don't believe that's under the prior, but I can go back and, and look. Or unless Brian, you have a chance to. I don't believe.
I did notice it in article seventy, I do have it pulled up and I can do my best to read. I'm, I'm not as eloquent as Attorney Satchi, so I will do my best. But if you do have it up, that probably be easier to screen share because I don't think I can from mine. But yeah, under the special permit uses and structures, it says, under item two C, building materials sale and storage yards with a great, with a lot area greater than twenty thousand square feet as one of the special permit uses and structures. And so I'm not sure if it's because this, the storage is like an ancillary user to the, the primary use, that that's why it wasn't a special permit. But I, I wanted to confirm with you or Attorney Satchi on that.
That's the use, that, that use was not the use that they're seeking there for the transportation maintenance facility. So if that had similar criteria for the lot area requirement, then it would be a special permit, but there is no criteria for that particular use.
I think I'm following that. So just to say it back to you to make sure I'm understanding, because this maintenance facility is a not a defined use, it's falls under the special permit side of things. And if it were like a primary storage yard use, that that's when it would fall under the special permit. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, let, let me state it differently. So I just got caught up to the regulations. So under uses and structures in the I two zone, listed use E is a, excuse me, D is a building materials sale and storage yard with an area less than twenty thousand square feet. So that's permitted by site plan approval. If you scroll down further, and I can happy to screen share if it's helpful.
It might be good for others. I, I know I have it up, but I don't know if others do.
Let me, let me do that.
Also for the record, while he's pulling it up, Mr. Schulman, I, I did watch the prior meetings video all the way through. So
Oh, thank.
Yeah, of course.
So here is site plan uses for the industrial number two zone, which is the zone that the site was in upon date of application. B are, B one is the listed site plan uses, and I believe what you were referring to was letter D, which is a building materials sale and storage yard less than twenty thousand square feet. So that would be permitted by site plan. Also, under the site plan criteria is the transportation maintenance terminal, which is what the applicant has applied under. So that's a site plan use. Further down is the special permit uses and then E, or sorry, C would be that what you just referred to. So yeah, if they were applying as a building materials sale and storage yard, then that would require a special permit because of the size of the lot.
Okay. Okay. But because it's a secondary use, it doesn't apply as a special permit rights only as a, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Steve, can you pull that up again?
Yes.
And can you scroll up? To the, to the thing that applies to to the, where it says the transportation maintenance terminal.
I'm going the wrong way now. Sorry.
Transportation maintenance facility.
Yes.
Thank you. Subject to review and approval of environmental impact report. And we got an environmental impact report, right? We got like five different environmental impact reports that all said like the opposite things. And in the in your draft resolution to approve, it says something like, given that air quality doesn't matter, given that we can't consider air quality. And Attorney Satchi is saying, you know, and the other one said, we can't consider air quality. But if we can't consider air quality, why are so many people providing rebuttals of the air quality? Like, why are we talking about it so much?
And you'd have to actually, and not to beef.
I know. I'm, I'm, I'm not asking anybody directly a question. I'm just reading that it, that it specifically says subject to the review and approval of environmental impact report. And we're all talking about it. I think it's a little strange to say we're not allowed to consider it. I also want to say that I, I biked the route. So I walk that route, I drive that route, I bike that route. There are no crosswax between the bridge and Roxbury going across Strawberry Hill. There are two that go along it, but there's no way for people to cross that safely as it is. The phrase of, of varying widths does a lot of work in that statement about the fact that there's sidewalks on the one side, the sidewalks are like literally this big. So I just wanted to enter that into testimony. I had something else to say, but it's really late. I forgot. I reserve the right to come back.
Are there any other questions?
I, I think.
All right, well, JJ first, go ahead.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, I think Anna raised a really good question about the air quality. Over the last three nights for public hearing, four nights, that has been a focal point. And I really do feel that that should be a consideration.
Okay. Other, other questions or comments?
I just had, had one. I was, I was, I was very happy to see the resolution that was drafted by Steve with the changes that were made and the specific references to the traffic situation because frankly, the only reservation that I had about after listening to all the testimony, the only reservation that I was left with was Fitch Street and East Avenue. I'm, I'm still like very concerned about the trailer trucks utilizing that route. And I only say this because I drove the, I don't know what the cat, what the phrasing of it was, but the preferred routes or however they, they call that, the way the trucks are going to come. And you know, triangle, it, the site is perfect for what they want to do with it, but getting trailer trucks into it from the way the roads are in Norwalk just seems like a really difficult situation to me. So I was just wondering if the applicant would consider, I know we probably can't make this a condition, but if the applicant would consider, you know, until the work is done on the railroad bridge and, and the East Avenue improvements, you know, maybe not using the giant trailer trucks, you know, something, something a little smaller until the roads are worked out. That's my feeling on it. I do agree after I've heard all the testimony that it is a fairly low impact use for this site. I, my first house in Norwalk in nineteen seventy-three was on Raymond Terrace. And that was the direct turn from Interstate ninety-five to Norton. So there was fifteen hundred cars came up my street every morning. So I appreciate the traffic aspect of it, but I think this is a lot less impactful use than it could be.
Steve? I, I, I would say just, I think we still haven't quite closed the hearing yet. No, we have, we haven't. Finish that.
Yeah, I got carried away. Sorry. I'm tired too.
All right.
Quickly before I, I put a seventeen pound ham in the oven this morning after getting up at four thirty to prepare it. And I forgot to take it out of the oven at five o'clock. That's why I had to run.
Are there any other questions? For Attorney Satchi before we close the hearing?
Right. And I, I just have one other comment just in regards to commuting.
Is it a question for Liz? If it isn't, wait until we close the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Attorney Satchi, you have completed your comments. There do not appear to be any other questions to be directed at you. Then I'm going to close this hearing and we'll, we'll move on into action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission.
Okay. Go ahead, JJ.
So I'm just from a commuter's point of view, I've driven to that site what, twice actually, taking a different, different route. And I don't know, I don't understand why the, the turn onto East Avenue and then Strawberry Hill was the only consideration. I mean, there's, there's a different approach. You can come down East Ave, come up East Avenue and go up easily or go up Sunset and come around a beacon. I mean, I just don't understand why that point on the right side of nine, of the ninety-five offer sixteen was considered and not the other route. That's all.
It's a, a good question. Steve, do you want to put up the resolution? Well, and I'll ask if there's a motion to approve, so we can start the conversation.
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Rowena has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And Ms. Wells has seconded. All right, let's put up the resolution and begin to talk about it.
I remembered one of the many things that I keep forgetting. This was actually from two weeks ago, I think, where we thought where we didn't know it was going to go this long, but, so I didn't share it then. But that week I got stuck behind two large trucks. I don't, I don't know what number they are, how many wheels they are, whatever. Turning, trying to turn from Strawberry Hill onto the, the road that takes you to Norton. And I wanted to enter that into the record. I get, I drive it like four times a day. It's getting worse and worse with the with the walk bridge and I just can't imagine doing anything, bringing more truck traffic. I recall.
Anna, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On that? Would you, I got, I, I hear that at the same time. Would you rather five hundred to eight hundred cars coming through at any point in day?
So I think that's off. I don't know if the word is right. So I think that's sort of a false thing of like, but isn't this better than what it could possibly be or what the application was before? I might prefer five hundred cars a day to the trucks that get stuck making that turn and everybody's backed up. I don't know. That's not the application in front of us. But I remember the application for the rock that's the non-rock crushing, the rock reprocessing thing where TMP said something like, we don't think there should be even one more single truck coming in and out of this place, driving past the school, going down this road. We think even one more is too much. So then the idea that like, okay, it's hundreds, but it won't have an impact on things till it's thousands. And we're trying to do interventions to get less cars on the road. Like, I think it's all a bit con- conflictual. This is a project that's going to bring more large vehicles and trucks through residential streets on this route. I know they're arterial. I know they're theoretically designed for that, but we're you know, it, I don't know. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I, I think Anna, you, we also need to keep in mind the number of trucks we're talking about. It's the larger trucks. It's a very, very small number.
Two a week.
TMP thought that one more was too many. Okay. I don't know that one more is too many and it's.
And right now, East Avenue is under construction and the Walkbridge project is in full swing, but that's temporary. That's not a permanent condition. And things will be much easier.
How many years is temporary?
I don't know, Anna, but we, that's not the problem for the, this property owner. You know, this, this property, it nonetheless is, is a temporary problem. This, it will end.
I hope so.
I think it's just a few years. I, I could get you the exact, you know, the exact duration.
All right, let's, let's, let's start going through this. I mean, there'll be, we'll, each of us, if we agree, will have an opportunity to vote on this up or down. Steve, what does the red lettering represent? The red was changes from the first, it's, there are a couple wordsmithing changes that are highlighted in yellow, which I'll show you on a couple Okay. related conditions, but these red were from the first draft to the second. Okay. Steve, it's late and I have old eyes. Can you blow that up just one, one more section?
Could I also, do we scroll up a little bit? You know, I, I think we were talking about the air quality piece before, but maybe I misunderstood that, like part of that regulation we just pulled up a little while ago. It, it said that part of the maintenance terminal was like an environmental impact report was a part of that. And so do you go back down, I think?
Down?
Yeah. Sorry, I, I was, I was looking up and thinking and not looking at your screen. I apologize. Yeah. Keep going. It's after item seven, whatever's bold and seven from the site plan.
Okay, well, there you are. There are seven.
Yep. Okay. Then two after it. There you go. That's right where your cursor is. So yeah, two after that, whereas air quality impacts are not under the purview, et cetera. I thought it might fall under that environmental impact statement. And so I didn't know if that whereas was, was accurate. I, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding that, but I just wanted to call that out.
Well, I mean, the, the reason that the wording is the way it is, because I, I think contrasting that with traffic, for example, you, you have a measurable number or letter or quantity at that stage, you can, and there's a level of service determination that's made. So if you go from the, the proposed pro, proposed project goes from a level of service D to a level of service E or F, you can say that that project is causing a, a negative impact on the road network and either have to fix it, or if they can't fix it, you have the technically could deny it. This one, you don't have a metric that says it, you know, the particulate matter is going from five billion parts per million to six billion parts per million or whatever. There's nothing to point to. There's not, it's not representative jurisdiction at all.
But even if there's no metric, right, the, the regulation doesn't say that there has to be, we have to determine that there's a level of service F. It says that we have to determine it's, it's not that it, why can't I find stuff when I need it? But it was whether we think it will be detrimental or stable or reduce conditions. And it does use the word level of service later on in the paragraph, but it, it doesn't say according to this type of traffic study, if the commission, you know, the commission has to determine that it's level of service F or worse. It doesn't. And we get to look at safety on adjacent properties and safe development. And all of that is contained here. Plus the environmental review.
I'm not trying to be.
And I'm not trying to be argumentative either. I apologize.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, the problem with that logic, if you follow it through is based on the, the report submitted by the, the neighbors is that you can't add any vehicles to the roadway network without contributing to deteriorating air quality. So I can't, you can't add an ADU on somebody's property if they have a car at that, at that point. And I know that trucks create more in different types of exhaust based on the, the type of vehicle and fuel they use than a car would, but I think you could, I think there are scenarios you could easily come to fruition with, with this site that would generate a lot more in terms of exhaust than what's being proposed by.
Things could always be worse.
I think where I was going with this was more of, instead of saying that this is not under our purview and not applicable and said, could we rephrase this to something like, you know, we reviewed it and we found that like, we could not substantiate that it was a like significant impact, right? Because the models can't show at that level or something to that tune. So basically not not saying that like, we're never allowed to look at this, but.
Yeah, that seems, that seems quite reasonable. I forgot where that was.
Uh, two under the site plan review listed items. I really hope they figure out models to help us model this better, but yeah, uh, keep, keep going down. It's after the site plan review standards. So it's like two after item seven in that site plan review. Yeah, keep going down.
That's right. You're almost at seven. Keep going.
Yeah, right there. Right. Uh, yep. So the second whereas, yeah.
You want to propose language?
I'll do my best at ten thirty and forty.
Oh, you're getting help.
That air quality impacts are.
Difficult to determine.
That's a fair choice.
Yeah, maybe something like where the scale of this application does not have sufficient does not have significant impact on.
I'll type in, you can.
If, if you're going to put that down, then you have to say why? Is it because the amount of the, the amount of trucks is only two per week? Like, what is the reason why?
Yeah.
You know, I think we just.
Could we remove this? Do, do we need to have this whereas statement?
You can do whatever you like. It's your. You know, you, in, in, in this action, I think you want, you want to have a response to each of the things that we're supposed to be looking at. So I think that it should stay in.
I think something like we find that the air quality impacts will not detrimentally affect the safety of the adjacent developing whatevers is reasonable. To be clear, I disagree. I don't, I did not find that. I listened to five different experts and the community, and I find differently. But I think that's the reasonable way to write it.
I can adjust this. Don't say abutting, just say the neighborhood. Okay. Again, let's keep moving. This is a long resolution. A couple of these, just to kind of, sorry to go backwards again, but, um.
Also, this is maybe off the point, but while you're doing this, is presumably the M T A is getting cars off the road by providing trade service to get people on the rails versus on the roads, which would positively impact air quality.
Is this maintenance traffic starting from this site going to increase the use of the railroad?
Yeah, you have to maintain the railroad in order to use it, right?
Does it have to be here? For them to maintain it?
Somewhere. And this is a place where there they can go and provide good jobs.
Um, again, sticking with this, um, I'm not comfortable with number three, um, uh, since it's an existing facility. Do we have the authority, uh, to insist on the charging stations?
You know, I, I mean, I understand Attorney Sutchie's point, um. It, I, you know, who knows? It's a little bit questionable, not positive that you can require that. Um, while it is an existing facility, it's a, a new use within the facility, you know, kind of repurposing the site. If you felt it wasn't warranted or didn't want to include it, uh, you know, I'm not, not a sword I'm dying on.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think it's warranted. Um, I think it's something that ought to be done. The only question is, do we have the authority to, uh, tell them to do it?
Yeah. Well, you know, also not trying to pick on Attorney Sutchie, but she didn't mention anything about condition four, and I don't, there's nothing in your regulations that talk about dark sky compliant fixtures either, but I think it's just, it's a site plan application. They're related to improvements on the site. Uh, you know.
All right. I then let three and four both stand. I, I can.
But just quick question. So. Okay. So with, with three, with, with, with three standing as it is, and they are going to have a shuttle van that is going to transport their employees.
They're only going to have a shuttle van if they have, um, uh, employees who wish to use a shuttle van. They, they cannot insist, uh, that their employees use it.
Oh, okay.
The same for a union, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a union shop. You can't simply impose that.
And also the, going back to the E V chargers, it is private property, so it's not a public use property. You and I are not going to go there, park our car, walk in there and, you know, want to charge up while we're there. So it seems to me that's um, uh, nothing against E V chargers, but it's private property. It would be like you guys telling me I have to have put an E V charger on my yard.
Well, it's not exactly the same. Um, you know, Tammy, if, 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 if this were a new development, um, we can tell them to do it. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure that, uh, your, your argument holds water. Again, is a question about whether we actually have that authority. That's a different issue.
Yeah. I, again, if you wanted to remove that one, it's fine. And I'm not gonna.
Steve, one of the things I was wondering about on that, you say 10% of the parking spaces, but they, they, what'd they say? There was 1,200 parking spaces. We're not, we're not talking about 120 chargers, are we?
No, it's, it's for their, their application. So it wouldn't be for the, the entire site has 1,200. So they don't have that.
But I thought they said they had 150 parking spaces plus 700 for storage and.
Right. You certainly don't need E V chargers on the 700 spaces.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just being a nitpicker.
That's okay.
Does say parking spaces.
Used parking spaces?
By the applicant, Steve, after parking. For vehicle parking by the applicant.
Yes, that's a good, the, yes.
Okay.
How many, if it was an apartment building, would we make them have? How many do they have?
Isn't that, isn't 10%, isn't 10% the requirement, state requirement?
Randy recalls, is it 10 or is it 20?
Percent?
I think it's 10. I could be wrong.
Regulations.
How many do they have in Halsted? 250 units?
I don't know if they have any. I'm not sure if they've installed them. But that, when that was approved, they weren't.
Before the regulations.
All right, Steve, let's keep moving. It's, it's late. Um, we have to decide, uh, we have to get through this or try to get through this. And, um, we have more on the agenda.
We're not starting another application tonight, are we?
We do have another application here.
Yeah, but.
About, let's talk about it when we get, when we get finished with this.
Do we have to add anything to 13 if this is gonna get approved to make that more?
No, they've already, they've agreed.
Meaningful? No, just like that stays intact over time. Like if they change their times after.
Right, as they, as they very well may.
Right. The what, what do we have? What? I mean, that becomes an enforcement action, but I don't think anything in 13 would give you any teeth.
Well, we can say going forward.
There you go.
Well, what if the public school changes the time and they decide to make Norwalk High School start later? Cause they say.
That's what we're talking about here. We're talking about them having, uh, the, the responsibility for changing their start times if the schools change theirs.
Based on the school.
Yes.
Why don't we just say now and going forward? Or use your language.
I was already typing. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's fine. Okay.
That's good.
Let's move down.
Yeah. So the yellow hi, I'm sorry, jumped the page. The yellow highlights some wordsmithing that I added, um, today, just, um, conversations with, uh, Marissa and T M P, just clean up and make it a little more, um, specific.
I like 15.
But after they notify staff, what could come after?
Uh, for 15, 15 kinds of, um, uh, that's a good question. I'm just jumping ahead to 16 and 17 and see if that's captured there. Yeah, I mean, we could add something. It's a good point, um, Darius, just because 16 and 17 kind of lead into each other, but 15 kind of is left hanging a little bit.
Uh, shall notify the, uh, planning and zoning staff? And be subject to the approval of the commission? Or could it be, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what we did with the conditions below is we may said, when you got above that 50% threshold, um, then you needed to evaluate X, Y, and Z again. It's a little different because it, you know, they're talking about two trucks. So you're talking about three trucks or four trucks or, you know, if they, even if they 100% increase, it's not a large number, but I think maybe towards the, um.
Why don't we say that if this, if the planning and zoning staff deems it necessary, it'll be referred back to the commission. So if it's two trucks, it goes up to three trucks, you may think, well, that's not a big difference.
Discrepancy.
Up to four or five, that is a big difference.
If this were Wegmans, would we be allowed to do that? They have tractor trailer trucks coming into their place. I'm just curious.
They were a special. Special person.
And so that makes a difference.
They're also not in a sensitive neighborhood in the same, in the same way that this is.
Well, I, I. Sorry, what? No, go, go. No, it's okay. Tammy.
Okay. So we're moving on?
Yes.
Did you want me to, I'm sorry, did you want me to add language to that? I was just trying to think of something appropriate that I, based on what was in, um, 16 and 17 below, but I, it's a little tricky to do that one on the fly.
Right.
How about which shall then hand them a cease and desist order?
I'm sure they would love that condition.
Uh, what was your suggestion again, Gayle?
My suggestion was that if the zoning staff sees a significant increase, it'll be referred back to the commission. So the zoning staff gets to decide, is this significant?
What is significant? I, um, I like, uh, Galen's suggestion.
Because, you know, once the Walkbridge project is done, another tractor trailer truck may not be significant, but two months, it may be.
Yeah.
How will the zoning staff know when they've added more? Like they're tracking the number of tractor trailers and there's somebody there who knows they have to pick up the phone?
I think. Yep. I was gonna say, we're, we're gonna rely on the staff, uh, to work that out with the applicant.
I appreciate this effort to try to like predict what may happen and putting contingencies and ways to further evaluate or fix things. But I feel like if something needs this much of this, it's not a good idea.
But, you know, it, it's, it's almost like with, with anything that occurs, if, if they had you know, when the, um, D O T first started occupying the site, no one even knew they were up there. Um, after a little while, a couple of neighbors reached out about what's going on with the truck. So sometimes you don't even know certain activities are going on on properties until someone's actually really paying attention or really watching what's happening out there. So I think it, it would be a, a a case of, I think, one, the, uh, follow-up traffic study would provide a little bit of that data. But if it's three or four years down the road, are we getting complaints? It's just seem, just seeing, things seem out of the ordinary or beyond the scope. I think we'd have to just evaluate it if, if people were making complaints about that time.
So couldn't we put that in there if it's triggered by a neighborhood complaint? No, it could be triggered by all kinds of things. You know, I wanted to put that in because then you're limiting it to a neighborhood complaint.
Well, yeah, I think if, if the, if the neighbor complained, they said, hey, there seems to be an inordinate amount of tractor trailer trucks coming to and from the site, then we would, A, take a look. And then we, we go, you know, probably contact them and say, hey, you had this approval with these conditions. Where are you at in terms of the, the number of trucks?
Right.
Exactly.
All right. In the meantime, Steve, let's continue scrolling.
We're close to the end. Anything unsaid? Cause that's kind of a long one. There's no changes, um, 20 is the last one.
On 18A, I think that was something that, um, Richard was speaking to earlier, and I think it's also one that I'm kind of hung up on as well. And I, yeah, the, um, the turning movements and also just like the intersection between East Ave and Fitz Street. And like how that's gonna work with, uh, large tractor trailers or, uh, as I'm learning that they're called W B 67s, right? W B 50s. Uh, and, uh, um, yeah, like I, I worry that, um, since it wasn't, you know, in the materials here, like, you know, not only did we not have a chance to hear about it and see it, but our peer review regimen either, and the public didn't as well. And so I, I, I worry about that one as a, as a thing that's a um, outlier. I don't know how to remedy that. Yeah.
If you look at the, the, um, conditions 15 through 18 kind of work hopefully in tandem. And that, so as, as part of their, basically what we're asking them to do at the six month, you know, occupancy level is to look at their driveway, evaluate, um, how many vehicles are coming out of their driveway or driveways? And what type of vehicles they are. So if it's cars, trucks, big trucks, whatever. So they're, they're classifying all that. And then further down, they're looking at expanded out the, uh, intersections beyond what was indicated in the initial traffic study to also look at Fitch and East Avenue. So we'll know, um, at that juncture, how many more trucks or large, I shouldn't say just trucks, how many more large vehicle types are exiting the site? Does that match up with what they proposed? Then we'll also know the number of vehicles in total exiting their particular site. So we'll have more specific than we have now. And then we'll also be able to look at the intersection of Fitch and East Ave to see how it's functioning. And I think we did include, um, as a condition of approval that they had to get counts prior to occupancy to go back and, and start that baseline. So I think that's what we tried to catch up on with those conditions.
Okay. Okay, um, any further discussion on, um, on this resolution? Um, if not, um, I think we should, we should call the question.
Um, do I have to move to approve it as modified?
Yes, you do.
So I do.
Okay. And the seconder?
Yes, I agree. I was the second.
Um, uh, I think we need to do this via roll call.
Sure. And I'll, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Rowena.
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Uh, yes, but I'd just like to make a couple of comments or is that not appropriate right now, Lou?
That's perfectly all right. Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. I, I think this has obviously been a very, um, arduous application. It, it has brought up a lot of passions and, um, people in the neighborhood. And I think that while I definitely want to acknowledge the people in East Norwalk that have spoken against this, um, that this site is sort of between a rock and a hard place. And that if, you know, if it isn't this application, what else is it going to be? We've turned down some things. I wasn't on the planning and zoning when the 250 unit apartment building went in there. I'm sure that people were opposed to that as well. Uh, but that's probably 250 cars in and out at least once a day. Um, and I just, I'm gonna vote in favor of the application, uh, because I think there, it's a taxpaying property. It's, it's jobs coming to Norwalk hopefully. And, but I, I do recognize and empathize with the people in the neighborhood. Um, but, you know, 250 units at the end of the road. What if it was another Avalon building? Then it's gonna be 500 cars in and out every day versus a couple, some tractor trailer trucks, some dump trucks. So anyway, I, I have a lot more to say about it, but I will stop there. Thank you. So yes, I vote in favor.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, and with some brief comments that I too am really happy that, uh, somebody folks did come out to speak, um, the community really does care a lot about this area and I appreciate all of the, all, all the comments that came in. I, um, I'm voting yes, because I think it adheres to the framework that we have to evaluate it to, and we have to set aside other feelings we might have about it. Um, but thank you everyone for coming out.
Yeah. Mr. Williams?
I'll go last.
I was very last for the chairman. I'm sorry to hate to say.
Until last.
Um, uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna vote yes, um, but I also would like to go in the record. I know they said, they said earlier that um, they're bringing, they're bringing jobs to, to Norwalk, to Connecticut as a whole. And I. And I would like to see, you know, more, I guess. More, more stress on putting the word out, not just job fairs, not just, you know, ju- go to high schools. Go to, go to some of the, um, the training schools like N C C. And let them know that these things are available. Uh, we need to get people working and if this is a mechanism to get it done, then we need to be more. Aggressive and assertive with our approach in getting people in the door.
Yeah, I, I, I. It would have been an odd condition of approval, but we probably should have, probably a little late in the game to put that in as a condition of approval to work with city staff on. Job development program or something, but we can, we'll make sure that. It gets addressed before they get any permits.
Thank you.
And where do we leave up? Uh, Ms. Tabashnik?
No. And I also have wondered what else could the owner do with this site? And I have no idea. And I think that's why having a, a study for that site. Made a lot of sense, and I would have liked to see the results of that. And I'm voting no, because I don't think it conforms to our regulations. Based on the testimony we've heard.
Hey, Mr. Cantor?
No.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Okay, well, first I will just start off by reading an excerpt from the Connecticut Land Use Law and Practice. So, uh, site plan regulations contain basically two types of provisions. Those requiring the plan to show the location of designated structures and improvements. And to particular standards that must be met such as setbacks and number of parking spaces. Usually conformity with these types of standards is not difficult. Uh, while the regulations may contain, uh, general standards, it is difficult, not impossible. For the commission to deny a site plan application for non-compliance with a vague general standard. A typical general standard is one contained in the Walton zoning regu- uh, regulations which reads as follows. Standards for a site development plan approval. Enacting upon any site development plan application, the commission shall determine that the requirements of the zoning regulations are met. That the arrangement of parking areas, loading facilities, pedestrian, uh, facilities. Traffic access and circulation both on as well as off-site are properly planned for. And, uh, properly planned and provided for. Uh, goes on to say that allow, what's it called, that electric lines on site will be installed underground wherever possible, that. Such, uh, other provisions where utilities and drainage will be made as necessary to prevent hazards. Or protect the public safety and convenience. And the arrangements of buildings and site improvements is such that it will facilitate and promote the most harmonious relationships. Between developments and land uses, whether existing or potential or on adjoining properties. Use my weariness. All that to say that I, there are still many outstanding questions that I have. Um, and I cannot vote in favor of this. Application, so my vote is a no.
Mr. Sherman?
I don't, um, uh, share the difficulties of, uh. Many of the other commissioners on this. Um, I think the regulations are, uh, quite clear. Um, and, um, I, I don't think I have any choice, frankly. But to vote, uh, yes on this. You know, I can sympathize with the fears of the neighbors, but I think those fears are overblown. I think, uh, the, that, um, the, um. Uh, traffic issues that they fear. Um, um, will not come, uh, to, uh, fruition. Based on the number of, uh, vehicles that, uh. Uh, we're seeing here. Um, an awful lot of the comments we heard had nothing to do. Um, with, uh, the, uh, requirements for a site plan review. Uh, if, uh, the property owner, uh, is not the best owner. Um, frankly, that's i- irrelevant. Um. Uh, if this is not the highest and best use, that's irrelevant. Um, you know, we have, uh, seven criteria under which. Uh, we, uh, evaluate a, uh, site plan review in my view. Um, uh, this, uh, project, uh, regardless of how I may feel about it. Um, meets, meets those, uh, requirements. And, um, that's why, uh, I feel I have to vote yes. So Steve, I, uh, I'm sorry I lost count.
I believe six to three was the count.
Okay, um, so it passes. Um, the question is, what do we do now? Uh, it's eleven oh six. Uh, I think, um. Uh, at least, uh, Richard has gotten a little slap happy. Um, as he, uh, indicated in his comments earlier.
I imagine we're all at that state.
Yeah, I mean, I, do, do we want to, uh, continue? Uh, and, uh, hold the first portion. Of another public hearing, or do we want to defer everything? We do have. Uh, our special meeting on the twentieth. Um. We could just try to do everything, uh, uh, on the twentieth. Steve, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so if, if that is your choice, and I understand, you know, it's, I apologize to the public, everybody that wanted to see this, but sometimes things just get away with you. Um. You do need to open the hearing. You can immediately continue it to the twentieth. The only action you have to take tonight on that is to authorize the peer review of the traffic and the environmental. Which we kind of, kind of jumpstarted already. Um, and then I would also make one request for the two public hearings on the text amendments, if you would open those up. And then immediately continue them to the twentieth as well. Doesn't mean you have to do them on the twentieth, but that way. We don't have to run new legal notices and the clock will continue to function as it is.
Okay.
And just last thing, the O N G Smith Street application needs to get decided by the thirtieth. Which of this month, your meeting is the twentieth, your next meeting is the twenty sixth. Which means you would be, in an absolute emergency, you could do something that Thursday or Friday, but.
I was gonna say.
Decide that week.
Should we, should we just see if people are available on the twenty seventh or just do we have that booked if we're?
Let's do one thing at a time. Um, what, what is the, 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 the feeling of the members regarding? Continuing our meeting now?
Long day. Yeah, I, I can't focus on anything at this point.
Okay, I, that, that's fine. Um, then, then we'll, uh, open, uh, the hearing and continue it.
Um. Yeah, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend just, uh, if you're gonna do that, open the hearing, get a motion to continue in a second, vote on that. Um, but before you do that, vote on the peer review, um.
That's fine.
Then do that.
Okay, we'll do that. Um, and we can talk afterward. So, uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, is a public hearing, um. Twenty twenty-four dash nineteen S P R slash cam O N G Industries. Twenty thirty-four, forty, forty-six, forty-eight and fifty Smith Street. District one, block fifty-nine, lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, sixteen and seventeen. Uh, reconfiguration and changes to an existing materials yard. So the hearing is open. Can I have a, uh, motion? Uh, to, uh, hire, uh, two peer reviewers, um. One, uh, traffic, uh, reviewer and, uh, the second, uh, an environmental, uh, reviewer.
Make such a motion?
Richard, Richard has moved, uh, although Chapin spoke pretty quickly, so Chapin, Chapin has seconded. Again, with a show of hands, all those in favor? Okay, that's, uh, unanimous. Um, I now need a vote to continue. Uh, uh, the hearing, uh, uh, on, um. Uh, June twentieth. Can I have that?
Make a motion to continue.
Okay, Chapin has moved. Uh, second please?
I'll second.
Okay, Galen seconded. Again, show of hands, all those in favor? Okay, next. Um, the Planning and, uh, Zoning Commission. Uh, Regulations Text Amendment to Article Four and Article Nine. To rev- revise the definition of lot or building side with. Uh, the location of where recreational vehicles are permitted to be stored in all zones. Facade requirements for duplexes in the C D two zone. And window and facade requirements for mixed use and industrial zones. Uh, can I have a motion, uh, to continue, uh, that hearing? Or this hearing? Okay, J J, was that, was that, oh no, I'm sorry, it was Tammy.
Yes.
And, um, Darius seconded. All those in favor? Okay, and, uh, finally. Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission, Zoning Regulation Text Amendment. To Article Four to amend the residential building, uh, height determinations and modification. To frontage building types permitted in the C D four zone. Uh, again, can I have a, uh? I'm, open the hearing. Can I have a motion to continue the hearing to, uh, June twentieth? Uh, Tammy has moved, Chapin has seconded, all those in favor? Um, okay. Um. Yeah.
Why are we making June the twentieth so top heavy when we have an option for June the twelfth?
We don't. We don't, am I wrong, Steve? Do we have a meeting scheduled for the?
No, they.
No, but, but can we have a meeting scheduled for the twelfth?
Oh, no, in, in, in terms of notification and the like, uh, uh, there's no time for that.
Okay.
Uh, it's only, it's only a week away.
Yeah, I mean, the, the tricky thing is when you're trying to. Not all the meeting, not all the applications are on the same timeline. Right. The other ones had a little more flexibility and they were at different stages of completion. So where we. Kind of try to forecast out where things are gonna finish up and then the O N G ones on a different timeframe, so it just kind of. The way it worked out, and we, we set up the extra meeting, we set it up for the twentieth. Thinking we'd be a little further on than we got tonight, but we just didn't get there.
And Diana, I want to apologize. I won't be at the fundraiser. But my wife will ably represent me. Okay, um. Uh, again, we're here, approval of the minutes of, um, May fifteenth. Can I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, Sammy has moved. Anna, did I see your hand up? For a second, okay. Um, all those in favor? Okay, uh, no, um, Diana, you're gonna have to recuse yourself. You weren't at the meeting. Um. And, uh, finally, the minutes of May twenty-second.
I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay.
I abstain as well.
Tammy, uh, moved, is there a second?
I'll second, Darius.
Darius seconded, uh, all those in favor? Um, okay, it's, um, majority. And, uh, we, we have, um, two.
Sentient.
Yeah, that weren't, that weren't here. Um, that's it, finally, a, um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have, I, I, just about everybody. Is there a second?
Just to remind you, I won't be here on the twentieth.
Right, uh, likely, uh, the twentieth is going to be a hybrid meeting. Um, uh, I will, I will make sure that I'm at, uh, City Hall for that.
And then we are meeting on the twenty-sixth, correct?
That is, that is correct. That is the, uh, following meeting.
Yeah, we, we're actually trying to. Move stuff around so you don't have to meet at your first July meeting, so you'd have like four weeks off. So that's our, that's our plan.
Should we pencil in the twenty-seventh, just in case with O N G, like, given we have to act by the end of that week?
Yeah, well, I think there's a good chance you'll get through. That's the only thing we have on the agenda, so.
Okay.
You know, assuming attorney suchies presentation's an hour, hour and a half. Then you have the rest of the night for public comment. You don't have to vote that night. You have the following week to vote, so you do have that time.
For.
I won't be back until the twenty-eighth.
Well, enjoy your vacation.
Yeah.
For, uh, anyone, uh, who, uh, came this evening, uh. To observe the O N G meeting and for those who came to present. Uh, my apologies, uh, that we ran, uh, so late. Um. But, uh, un- unfortunately, that's the nature of. Of, uh, what we do. We don't fully control. Uh, the, uh, length of these meetings. So. With that, uh, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.